Ms. Anguola, Ms. Bayla, President, Mr. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Hauptman.
Here.
Mr. Candela. Ms. Sullivan. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on our agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? And it does not look like we have any public comments. So we are going to move on to our presentations. I just wanted to let everybody know we're changing the order on the agenda. Because we first have our awesome presenters here to give us an update on West Oak Intermediate School. And then we move the District 120 Referendum information presentation to be right afterwards. So if there are any families here that are residents of District 120 and that would like to have more information about the referendum, we have some fantastic people from District 120 here to present about that. And so you're all invited to stay and listen if that interests you. And then afterwards, we will have a seat all presentation. But for all of our families, we understand you have little kids and you're going to be trying to get homes too. So please don't feel like you need to stay for the rest of the board meeting. We're so happy to have you here tonight, but we understand everyone needs to go to bed and to do their homework. So thank you for joining us and we are so excited to hear your presentation.
Welcome, West Oak Intermediate School. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Preble, our principal, who will do the introductions this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Charma Lewis and the board. It's my pleasure to present the work that our West Oak Intermediate students have been working on this year along with their teachers, directing and facilitating their projects. We are going to take a walk through some of the things that we have been doing in both Gen Ed and Dual Language throughout all three grade levels. So without further ado, could I have my presenters line up in order like we practiced, just backwards? And I'm wondering if it's best if I just hold the microphone for you guys.
Stand up here when you see, but we can't see you. So I think I'm just going to hold the microphone for them.
He didn't put it down into their space when they stand.
Will they be introducing themselves in which grade level? Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All part of the action, so. So what I want you guys to do is you don't just come up, stand up here. And you don't, yeah, just like that. Perfect. All right. So don't forget when you're starting. Oh, everybody, who you are, ready?
Hi, my name is Tara and I am in third grade.
Hi, my name is Zoe and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Mass and I'm in third grade.
In trimester two, we were learning how to research about a topic we were interested in.
We are also, we are also learning how to write a paragraph using our research.
We think it is important to celebrate and learn about Black history.
First, we, first, we had the opportunity to pick from a list of people to do, to do research.
Then we had to use different resources to complete our Google slides.
It was really fun to get to work with other students in our class that chose the same person.
Finally, we completed a timeline of the person's life.
Then we wrote an informational paragraph about what we learned.
This is my project. I chose Simone Biles. She won a lot of golden medals and was a good gymnast.
I chose, this is my project. I showed, I chose Simone Biles too. She won seven championships in a row and she is brave.
I chose Bessie Coleman. She was the first African American woman to get her pilot's license.
Hi, my name is Hyro. I am in third grade. In third grade, we do a research project. We choose to show our seven wonders of the world project. We got to pick our topic and use websites to look up more information. I chose Estatua de la Libertad, which means Statue of Liberty. Through this project, I learned more about the Statue of Liberty in New York. I enjoyed sharing this information with my classmates. Now I know more about research projects and more to do.
Hi, my name is, my name is Luisa and I'm in third grade. After we looked up information and got organized, we were able to put what we learned in our slideshow. We had sections on our presentations about facts, vocabulary, and places and photos of our place that we chose to study for our project. Through this project, I learned many things about that the, that I fear, the Eiffel Tower. I did not know like it has 1,665 stairs. The Eiffel Tower is more fascinating than I thought. That's part of my project.
Finally, after the end of our research, we put together presentations about our different countries and information.
The most fun part, we were able to make a slideshow and share it with our classmates.
Hi, my name is Ken. First, we got the opportunity to choose an animal we wanted to research and write an informational piece.
Hi, my name is Sambianna and I'm in third grade. Next, we had to use different sources to research all kinds of different facts about our animals, including their diet, habitat, and appearance. Then with the information we gathered, we filled out a brochure.
Lastly, did a gallery walk, a wander room to present our animal research and learn about our classmates we chose as well.
My favorite part about the animal research was writing about my favorite animal, snow leopards. The most interesting thing I learned was that they ate blue sheep from the mountains.
The most interesting thing I learned was the octo foxes can live a long time when they use stop paws to walk, cannot slip on ice.
In fourth grade, we researched countries, states, and animals. We learned about the geography, culture, and people and animals. We were, we presented our research to our class with Google Slides and Google Earth. Then we were able to experience a few countries in virtual reality.
For this, for this lesson, we were able to conduct a short research project. We were able to present on a topic with audio recordings and visual displays. We use precise language and vocabulary to inform or explain about a topic.
I chose to write about is the amazing tiger because of the way, the way it hunts its food. The unique stripes on their fur, their night vision is six times better than humans' night vision. Also, they are carnivores. Some of the animals they eat are pigs, deer, and even elephants.
These are pictures of tigers.
The country I chose was Japan. I chose Japan because I was born there and I have a lot of family there that I miss very much. Some interesting facts about Japan are Japan is mostly made out of mountains. The number four is very unlucky in Japan. Taking a power nap in work is acceptable. The most powerful food, popular foods are ramen and sushi. The background shows a Mount Fuji. It's the tallest mountain in Japan. The flowers in the corner are called sakura. Sakura only blooms in the spring for one through two weeks. Top left corner is the Japanese flag. The red circle represents the sun. Japan lies in the far west and the east. That is why Japan is called the land of the rising sun. Number four, Japanese currency is called yen. Fun fact, 10,000 yen is equivalent to $75 and you can buy 20 breakfasts, half meals, or two large and one medium Domino's pizza. At the bottom, it's called sushi. It's made out of fresh seafood and rice. My favorite is salmon and salmon rolls. Number six, in the bottom right, it's called kimono. A kimono is Japanese traditional dress. We wear that on special occasions like weddings and festivals.
El estado que investigué fue Mississippi. Hay muchas cosas interesantes para ver en Mississippi, como Tupelo. El lugar de nacimiento de Elvis Presley y Leland. El lugar de nacimiento de Kermit the Frog. Mississippi es también el lugar que nació, nacimiento de la música blues. Tienen el río más largo de los EUA. Se llama Río Mississippi. El apodo de Mississippi es el estado de magnolia por las, por las plantas que, de magnolia que tienen en Mississippi. There are a lot of interesting things to see in Mississippi, like Tupelo. The birthplace of Elvis Presley and Leland. The birthplace of Kermit the Frog. Mississippi is also the birthplace of blues, the blues music. They have the longest river in the USA. It's called the Mississippi River. Mississippi's nickname is the Magnolia State after the magnolia plants they have in Mississippi. This is Tupelo, the place in Mississippi. This is cornbread, a popular food that they eat a lot. Expande maíz, una comida popular, muy popular en Mississippi. This is a northern mako bird, which is a state bird of Mississippi right there. Es un rey señor del norte. Es, y es el ave estatal, estatal de Mississippi.
I chose Mexico because it is where my family comes from. I'm proud of this project because I worked very hard to create it. I learned all about popular foods, drinks, tourist destination, tourist destinations, landmarks from Mexico. The next slide shows places and things that are popular in Mexico. In the corners, North America, where Mexico is located in, next is a beach in Cancun. Then it's soccer, the most popular played sport in Mexico. After that, it's the Angel of Independence, where, which is located in Mexico City, which is also the capital. And the other side, in the corner, it is Chichen Itza. It comes from a city, an ancient city. After that, it's Mexico City, the capital. Next is Mariachis. It's a, it's very, they're very popular bands where they play. The next is tamales. It's a popular food where they eat in Mexico. This is Cancun. A lot of people like to go there in their vacations. This is a place where a lot of kids like to play in Mexico, Mazatlan. They go like after school and in their free time. This is the Playa del Carmen. A lot of people like to go there in their vacations also. This is Chichen Itza, come from the ancient city. This is the Angel of Independence, which, where it is located in Mexico City, which is also the capital, Mexico. Here's where my family comes from, Gavlado.
Informative opinion and personal narrative writing are all fifth grade standards. These standards require us to get a deeper understanding of our topic by adding descriptive details, supporting reasons, and use resources throughout the three types of writing.
Good evening. My name is Mateo Flores Vega and I am a fifth grade dual language student. This year, I have seen my writing improve in both English and Spanish. I was able to see various examples of good writing. I was also given the opportunity to practice writing in all of my subjects. Finally, I was able to meet with my peers to share our ideas and peer edit my work. These experiences have helped my friends and I create personal fictional narratives, opinion essays, and informational research projects that we are all really, are, are very proud of. My project was about Jackie Robinson. He was the first African American to play league baseball. The reason I chose him was because he could, he could be trusted. He didn't cheat and he was always honest and respectful, even when people treated him bad.
Hola, me llamo Lulu. Yo también estoy en el programa de lenguaje dual. Una forma de escritura que se nos pasa en quinto grado es, es la escritura de opinión. Hicimos una lista de ideas sobre temas que podíamos hacer como una clase. Luego elegimos un tema sobre lo que queríamos escribir. Yo decidí escribir sobre los uniformes escolares. En este ensayo, en ese ensayo. En este ensayo. Expliqué cómo los uniformes ahora han dinero. Cómo puedes expresarte mientras usas los uniformes escolares y, y que cómo puedes ahorrar tiempo en la mañana. Me encantó escribir sobre este tema porque podía expresarme a mí misma y mis opiniones a través de la escritura, de la escritura.
Hi, I'm Lulu Martin. I am proud of my opinion writing paper. As a class, we brainstormed possible topics. Then we were given a choice of picking our own topic, which I really enjoyed the freedom of being able to pick what I wrote. I wrote about school uniforms. I'm proud of my opinion writing paper because I was able to express myself and my opinions through my writing. Right here is my essay. I talked about how uniforms will save money, time, and you're still able to express yourself with your, while wearing a uniform, which a lot of my peers were concerned about.
Hello, my name is Olivia. Another type of writing that we do in fifth grade is informational writing with research. I researched a famous African American athlete, Serena Williams. I chose to use a variety of sources such as books and videos. I learned many cool things about Serena Williams. For example, that she learned to play tennis when she was really little. Also, that she went through a lot of hard things in her life, but she always persevered. With all this information, I created a picture book about her. This helped me learn good researching skills and how to look at a variety of sources to find important information for my picture book. That is my project that I did. And I Um, that is my project that I did and I really liked that I got to find my own sources to use to research Serena Williams.
Hello, my name is Lila. Another type of writing we do in fifth grade is informative writing. I chose to write about Edgar Everest because he is not well-known, but still important for people to know. My favorite part of this project was a graphic design aspect. I used a program, Canwell, to create a blog written in Edgar's ever's voice that displayed my writing. I was able to insert pictures, change fonts, and organize my facts. This is my project up here that I use, that I made. When I was working on my project, I also learned that he was the first field secretary to work for the NAACP. I also learned that his most popular accomplishment was working with James Mudder.
In conclusion, we learned the importance of the writing process, how adding details can enhance the voice in your writing, how to safely research and organize information, how do you, and how do you use a variety of technology to display research. This is the end. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you very much to our West Oak Intermediate students, to our teachers that have shown up in the back here to support and all the work that you've put in with your students, and a special thank you to Mr. Smith that helped guide them through.
Thank you, Mr. Prebble. Thank you, West Oak Intermediate teachers, third, fourth, and fifth grade bilingual as well as dual language, uh, teachers. Students, I am so very proud of you. I love the way that you planned, you prepared. I know you've been working on this for a whole week. I know you practiced on Friday. I know you practiced today and it really shows because it takes a lot of courage to go up there even as adults and speak in a microphone and you did it so well and I'm just so very proud of you. You sparkled. Congratulations. And now I'm going to introduce our superintendent from Mundaline High School District 120 as well as Elentree District 75 Mundaline, Dr. Kevin Myers, who has brought a team, um, with him to talk about the Finance and Facilities Committee update regarding the referendum. Welcome, Dr. Myers and team.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for providing us this time, uh, to be able to present to, uh, the Diamond Lake School Board. Um, it's very important that we felt we were able to get the information out. Our main role in this whole process with the referendum is to educate people on what the high school district's looking to be able to do. And after hearing some of the presentations, we're definitely excited about the future with seeing students being able to come up to the high school. I think the future is very bright and we can all say that. So tonight, Dr. Peter Restrelly and Ms. Lisa Yaffe will be providing the bulk of our presentation and I'll hand it off to him. Dr. Restrelly?
Well, kindergartners do grow up, is what I would say. I would say. That was great to see. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Peter Restrelly. I'm a member of the Mundaline Community, obviously, uh, president of the school board at the high school. Um, my wife is a kindergarten teacher here. Um, so it's neat to see, you know, stories beyond kindergarteners. This was great. Um, I'm actually not going to take a lot of your time. I'm going to hand it off to Lisa, um, who's going to give the majority of the presentation tonight. Uh, she's got some, some roots in the neighborhood here and I think that's important. Um, one thing I will say is, is, and it's a message that we've been sending to all of the members of the community if we've had a chance to, to, to interface with you all. Twenty, or what, I, I think as it goes, um, every day, twenty percent of Americans step foot into a school building on any school day. Um, obviously, some of us do that more than others, uh, but a school is the central hub of your community. It's a place where we not only seek out knowledge, but we seek out connection. We seek out nourishment in the form of knowledge, but in many other ways as well. Um, but it's a very special place for a community. Um, we have needs at the high school that our board has been challenged to address, uh, and to find solutions for. And we're here to share with you all those needs. Space is an issue. Uh, it's great to see it when it's full, like you saw it tonight in your room. Um, but when space becomes a constraint, uh, we have to find solutions for that. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. Uh, she's going to cruise through, uh, our typically forty-minute presentation into a very condensed. So we take the, uh, make the most out of your time and we'll make ourselves available too afterward and online through questions if there are any. Thanks.
Hello. Good to see you all. So nice to be here. So many faces I recognize. To those of you who I don't know, Lisa Yaffe, a former board member here for quite a while. Many of the people here I've worked with. And so we are here because we, oh, by the way, thanks for having us follow third graders. They did a terrific job and, and like Peter said, it's exciting to know that we're going to inherit some of those folks. Uh, so we are here because we, as Peter said, have a, a challenge ahead of us. And, and that is how do we meet the needs of Mundaline High School and all of the students and the staff, not only now, but in the future. And we have some serious constraints. Our high school has, and, and by the way, for those of you who, who don't know, we receive about seventy-five to eighty percent of your students. Am I right about that statistic? So a large number of the students who come through District Seventy-Six will go to Mundaline High School. So it's very relevant to your population. And we're so thankful that you're giving us the opportunity to talk tonight, as well as anything else you've done to help us get the word out. We are not in a position as board members, as you may all recall, to, uh, ask for votes, but we do feel a huge sense of responsibility to make sure our community understands why we're asking what we're asking. Why the board voted seven to zero to put a referendum on the ballot for District One Twenty. Mundaline High School is asking for a hundred and seventy-five million dollars from our high school base. It's a, a large ask and we know that. And yet it's a generational investment. We have a school building that was built, it was planned in the late nineteen fifties. It was built in nineteen fifty-eight to sixty-ish. It opened in nineteen sixty-one. And we have since then been very fortunate to be able to add classroom space, meaning the traditional teacher in a classroom, uh, space. Some of you have had the chance, I believe, to see our STEM addition. If you haven't, it's really fabulous and we've received all sorts of accolades and people come from all over the state and beyond to see it. Anyone who wants to tour, please contact us. That, and that's an example of how we've been able to meet the needs of classrooms. However, the rest of our facility is pretty much original footprint. In many places, original equipment, original utilities, original, et cetera. So what does that mean to us? We built our, our school with, oh gosh, my numbers are escaping. Was seventeen hundred when we start? Was it fifteen hundred when we started? We're at twenty-six hundred and growing. Twenty-two hundred. Numbers are not my strength. So anyway, we, we built a school and that was built for a certain style of teaching, a certain size of student base. And we have grown beyond that, both in terms of what kind of needs we have, but also in terms of, uh, just size, just the amount of space that we need. So here's where we are, or what we're asking for. I have my team here, by the way. Our team, it can, is comprised of not only Dr. Restrelly, who is our board president, but we have our superintendent, Dr. Myers. We have our business managers, our outgoing one, whom we will very much miss, Andy Searle, as well as our incoming one, Kathy Johnson. And we have Kevin Quinn, who is our director of facilities. So we are very much interested in making sure that we not only have a great learning environment for students, but also that we are able to attract teachers who want to be able to meet students where their needs are. As you all know, the pipeline for teachers in Illinois is a frightening prospect. We know that you've done a lot here to attract the best teachers and we also want to make sure that we can attract them and have them do what their calling is. And our facilities are a, a constraint. We don't have enough of the right kind of space. We are limited in terms of academics and activities. We have very, very, um, common logistical challenges. That is, we don't have enough space for everyone to do their practices, to do their activities, to have their meetings. And if we have a weather change or some part of the building is out of, out of commission, it creates a domino effect. So we're not only talking about the future, we have current issues in terms of being able to provide space for the current activities that we offer. Our food service is very limited. Students are eating very early, as early as ten fifteen. And their, their last lunch starts at one forty, goes until two-ish. And so we have students who are there all day and yet they might have had to eat breakfast early or eat, or, or eat lunch early or eat lunch late. The, uh, kitchen is limited. The auditorium is limited in space. We don't have enough space on the stage itself. We don't have enough space in the room to seat the, the whole class at one time. We, we aren't able to get, uh, someone in a wheelchair onto stage without having them leave and go around, uh, the back of the stage. We also have athletic spaces that, that are quite limited. In nineteen sixty-one, we had two girls' sports, ten boys' sports. Now we have fifteen boys and seventeen girls' sports. That's a whole lot more to accommodate with very limited facilities. So I'm going to quickly just have you skim through these. These are some of the quotes of the, the leaders in our staff who are having to deal with significant restrictions when it comes to our auditorium, when it comes to our athletic spaces, when it comes to, uh, the scheduling that we have to do. Our marching band's fabulous. Our show choir's fabulous. They're doing wonderful things and yet they are very limited in being able to use our space accordingly. So here's what we're going for. We're looking for updated servery. On the left side, you can see the students queuing in for lunch. It takes them a long time to even get their lunch. And then they'll have to sit in a very crowded place in order to eat it. As opposed to a, an updated servery where students can go in different directions, get updated food, and everything is meeting the current code and requirements and, um, the tastes of current students. For students who want to find space to sit alone at lunch, we do not have that kind of space available. Here's our auditorium. We also are, uh, looking at how to make sure that we have enough space to have our sets so that we can change sets. So our performances can take the whole space. This, these pictures, uh, the picture on the right is not exactly what our new athletic space might look like. These, this is called a field house and that is large and it has space and it's accommodated for some athletics. However, it's really a multi-pump, multi-purpose space. We want to make sure that every bit of space that we add is multifunctional and is using the, getting used to the best purpose. So we would do marching band practices. We could have robotics competitions. We could do all sorts of things in a larger space that we're not able to do now. On the right, you see an example of a, a stair wall, I guess we call it. Let's have a name for it. And, uh, the picture itself is just meant to capture the idea that the current research shows that students respond to newer construction. They respond to lighting quality, natural light, sound, and space. And we don't have those things. As you can see on the left, that's what it looks like when we have our students in our open space. As opposed to some new spaces that allow for students to find space to gather or to find space, uh, to be alone or in small groups if they so choose. The, the, this is our main entry here, but we also have hallways that are very crowded. So this is important for, for everything we share as a community. We are going to take our building that is on Holly. It's just to the west of our high school. It was formerly a Kirk of the Lakes church. This is a space where we have identified that we can put in career and technical education spaces. As you all are probably aware, for quite a while, we were talking about getting every student into college. We certainly want to make student, or make college accessible to students who are inclined to go. However, we also have kind of missed the opportunity to provide career and technical training. And not just shop and metal works from the old days, but technology-enabled vocational spaces. So that space we are dedicating to career and technical education, as well as a location to create a, a great place for our transition students to learn. Our trans- transition students are eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds who are learning, they're from our special education uh, classes who are learning how to become independent. And these are some examples of what that could look like. We want to complement what's being done at CLC and make sure that we're creating as many pathways as possible for all the students who come from all of our districts. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Quinn.
So two years ago, we started our, uh, master facility plan process and that's a recurring process. Commercial construction has a lifespan of fifty to seventy-five years. So nineteen fifty-eight constructed, we're right there. So we needed to dig in deep. So we went, we, uh, had a relationship with an architecture firm. We interviewed architects. We got different ideas, different perspectives. And we, and we introduced a engineering company to our, uh, to our facility to dig in deep and look at the components, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire protection systems within side of our building. Because those components also have a given lifespan. And we talked about energy efficiency. The last couple of years, we all known a lot about air, indoor air quality, the air turnover, things like that. So we dug deep into what our school looked like. In addition to that, we talked to staff. We evaluated the program needs and we determined we're short on size and we have an infrastructure that's past the chooseable line. We sit on forty-four and a half acres. If it's our size with the student population, we would need twice that amount of land to accomplish that. We don't have that. So we had to be creative with our land. So when we look at this, we're meeting program needs. We're also looking at introducing or addressing the nineteen fifty-eight construction and bringing that up to where we need and incorporating mechanical systems that have an energy savings that will result in a payback on some of the equipment and some of this construction project. So as you look to five there, five's on the north end of the property, currently greenfield. We use that as a practice field, called the North Field. That's where our multi-purpose, uh, facility will be, Field House. When we look at, we see basketball courts, but it truly is multi-purpose, band programs, different sorts of athletic programs. We have PE classes that'll go on, or robotics tournaments, things like that. We challenged our architects and engineers when they came and talked to us. We're not trying to be somebody. We're not a community to the north or a community to the east. We asked them, we challenged them to dig in and identify this community, identify the beautiful diversity that exists here and the character of this community. Dig in deep and they found that. So when we look at these spaces that reflects it. So we go from the field house, we moved to number four there. That's a competition gym. We have, no, below number two, we have a scene shot for our theater. The auditorium is in the center of the lavender shape there. The auditorium is positioned there. Our, part of the reason it's located there is because of constructability. We have a nine foot, six inch difference between our, our door five, which is roughly where the dotted red line is and our, where the competition gym is number four. So take advantage of that. The auditorium would be a perfect spin, uh, fit in that space. We move to the inside. We have expanded band programs right below where the auditorium is. Our band rooms were designed for eighty students. We have two hundred and fifty, uh, students in our marching band. Our B and programs, an award-winning program. We've done well. Our staff's done well. Encouraging and striving to create performers. We're limited on space. We don't lack in any of these avenues. We don't lack passion, motivation, professionalism for our instructors. We lack space, appropriate space, and that's how we're addressing this. When you look at number seven, that's the building that Lisa talked about for career and technical education. Every one of the students that walks out of thirteen fifty hallway needs to have a pathway for their lives. Not all of them go through college. So this is where we bring back our trades program, our manufacturing program and, and have the access to those students. So when they go into the workforce, we're partnering with companies inside of Lake County. We're number three in the state for manufacturing. We're taking advantage of them. We're bringing them in, getting their feedback on what those spaces should look like, and looking to partner with them so our students can transition into those firms. In addition to that, as Lisa mentioned, our transition program will be held in there. I'm going to try to do this right, and I hope I don't make a mistake. If anybody's driven past our property anytime in the morning or afternoon, they notice that's a problem. So the light green shaded area is a route that takes people around the campus. It'll free up our bus during drop-off and pickup, our athletic events at the end of the day. That'll also help eliminate a little bit of the stress onto the traffic on Holly and Midlothian and our community. So that's a big add. You'll see the spaces where four and two are. Four is where on the northwest corner is our softball dining. Our tennis courts are adjacent to that. You'll notice those aren't on this range here. So the district purchased the village green golf course, which is at Winchester and Midlothian in 2005, with the expectation that we would need to build a second campus there. That never came to fruition. So we decided, the board decided that they're going to make this a central hub for our athletics in the community. So it's a multi-purpose. We're talking with the park district, how can we use this? How can we dig deep and form close relationships? So we have baseball diamonds, softball diamonds, lacrosse, football and soccer fields. We use those for practices and lower-level competitions. Tennis courts and pickleball courts, number three. The detention that is not related to students, that stormwater detention, because we're taking up arable land. So then the rest of the land's going to be made open, walking paths for community. So we're looking to truly turn that into a community asset. This is our sequencing as we're at right now with what our, this is a four-year plan. We've looked to develop from the north, moving south. This isn't written stone, but this is a concept. We're going to move from north to south. We can build that larger, multi-purpose space for programs that are interrupted. Nothing will be canceled, nothing will be shuttered for course of construction. We just have to be creative on how we utilize space. So build that large volume space for those programs that would need to be temporarily relocated. I'm going to pass this over to Andy Searle, and he'll discuss the finances with you.
What we've shown here is Lake County High School tax rates. And we don't use elementary rate, and we don't use unit-of-differe rate, because they tax at different rates in high schools. So if you compare Apple to Apple, we use them to high schools, different Lake County. So you can see that all of them there, there are 10 of them in Lake County. Line line is the third lowest of all of tax differences in high schools in Lake County. Now what's done is it's given us good value for our taxpayers. They've got great programs, but as you can see, some of our all your different Highland Park, Deerfield, and Stevenson, they pass at a much higher rate. They have less figure tax bases, so they can generate a lot more revenue. They develop like fund balances, they're able to use buildings without having to go to the ref line. We don't have that option. We don't have, we have this fund balance, so we don't have to. However, when we do, while we do in the past, we're going to take it in over three years. Once that's done, we will be up a little bit higher than Stevenson, but still welcome all those grades they have. This is our target we've been using on our website and presentation. This shows what the tax impact of this is. You know this big gap. So I'm going to use $1,500,000, $300,000, to give you an example of what that looks like. And we are going to phase it in over three years. So the first year, 2024, will be $320,000, a term year, additional on the total tax. And that replaces $26,000 a month if no people have. That goes, and that's where they can't play two, your monthly payment. Next year, 2025, we would sell one bond, but the total amount would be 550, plus five, the total of $25,000 a month, which is almost 700 in the final year. And then that goes out for another 20 years, but some of your mortgage will pay back roughly to the next one year to $57,000. What we've also been telling folks too, if it involves, if you're not like the guy who's not like you see on film, or Brett's, and you'll see that comment, it's luck on your tax bill, and they have that tax now. It's just there. And Brett, as you guys know too, it's the third easy A D for that. So that's what you need to use to figure out where you're at on that.
Just over 20 minutes in closing. And I don't think this was any accident. I want to first thank you for hiring your superintendent when you did, because I think one of the direct results, what we've been able to see and experience in Midlothian High School, is we're going on five years in a row of being acknowledged as one of the top high schools in the country, and we're in a very competitive county. So to have that happen the first time, I think it's a direct connection between how we work together as two school districts. And secondly, one important thing to share with you also is when we talk to the town assessor. I think all of us at times have experienced perceptions of our school districts, whether it be good, bad, or negative. What our assessor's saying now is the area of 120 boundary which we live in, we are sellable. We're outpacing right now the counties and districts around us right now by about 2%. And that's a direct connection in my mind, a lot of ways, to our schools. So with that, I want to thank you for your continued support and working with us. Keep doing the great job you're doing with all those little ones that we're sharing tonight, and we look forward to having any questions people would have later on. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Myers. Thank you, Mrs. Yaffe, and Dr. Restrelly, and Mr. Searle. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Dr. Powell, I so appreciate your patience and flexibility. Thank you. And look, we saved, you have our standing room only, so you have no nerves now. It's just us.
Well, I was considering following those students was really a hard act to follow. So you actually gave me a lifeline there, Patna. All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and happy spring, first day of spring, right? So we saw a little sun today, and hopefully there'll be more following. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to consult with District 76. It's a pleasure to work with the people here, and they've been great, very collaborative, and specifically on this project too, the CEDOL review. I was contacted by Dr. Lewis back in the fall to take a look at things, as there were some messages out there that CEDOL maybe had some changes. So I went about doing a review and an analysis on the membership that you have with CEDOL to determine, you know, the challenges and the benefits, actually, to look ahead and see what was actually going on. So I'll start with just a little bit of my background and why I was contacted for this. So I am a retired assistant superintendent for special education. I spent 27 years in the field of education, 10 of those in the classroom as a special ed teacher. I worked in four different school districts and had experiences with three different cooperatives. In the time of that, in the course of that time, I did do some reviews and analysis on the co-op and actually orchestrated the withdrawal for one school district, and then a recommendation on another one from the co-op membership. So I went about this with a review of your partnership with CEDOL, and looked at the joint agreement, which is the actual contract that you have. And, you know, it outlines the members that are in there. There are 31 districts that belong to CEDOL, so this is a very large co-op. And the membership fees, the tuition costs, the related service costs. Currently, your district has 10 students in CEDOL. There may be 10, 11 for next year. That depends. But your average cost right now is about $48,000 a year per student. Now, that tuition varies from anywhere from $32,000 to $73,000 a year. So that's where we came up with that, $48,000. I went about this by, really with three people, Dr. Lewis, Dr. Olson, and Mr. Rogers, and started with interviews with each. And first of all, I had a conversation with Dr. Lewis about the information that was out there on CEDOL, and why, you know, she was considering having me go about this. And then I met with Dr. Olson, and this wasn't just about costs, though. It was, are the services that are being provided for the students adequate? Are we seeing best practices? And overall, we learned some really good information, and I'll talk more specifically about some of the challenges that we've seen. But, so Dr. Olson shared with me the various student placements and the progress. We talked about individual students and the progress that they were making. We also talked about opportunities for professional development for the teachers in this district, because a co-op will offer professional development, which really is valuable in the sense that you have 31 districts participating, so you really, you know, can offset a lot of those costs. And what we talked about was that that was less this year than previous years, considerably less. There, I had inquired about best practices for inclusiveness. So for example, if a CEDOL program is housed in a certain district, do our students have opportunities for participation in the general education curriculum at some point in the day? And what do those inclusive practices look like? We reviewed the number of special ed teachers in your district to take a look at how, if we wanted to, how could we service the students if we were considering bringing them back? Dr. Olson and I also attended a CEDOL meeting back in October, and it was very interesting. It was, obviously, 31 districts participated. And the real point of the meeting was to discuss some of the challenges that CEDOL was having, one being, and probably the biggest one, is hiring. And I learned later more on that from Dr. Lewis. I'll share that information with you in a bit. So that was, it was very interesting to look at what's happening with CEDOL, the challenges they have. They were looking at their mission statement. How can they change things to better serve the districts? And something to keep in mind is that the co-op works for you. The co-op is employed basically by the districts. So that's real important to think of it, because very often, people don't understand that. Then I met with Mr. Rogers and looked at the financial piece. So not as much about the students and the progress and the programs, but about the costs. We looked at the financial documents in terms of tuition costs, the other costs that are passed on in membership fees or maintenance and operation. And, you know, it's not, special ed is not a money saver. We all know that. There's costs involved. And the costs within a co-op are passed on to the districts by how they set the costs, and how many students would be in a program, for example. And then that tuition is divided among how many students are in a program. So you could have an intense program for students who are on the spectrum with maybe five to six students. And then you've got all those services that those costs are passed on. So we looked at the tuition and other costs, including related service costs, psychologists, social workers, occupational therapists, physical therapists. All of that gets compounded into those costs. And each individual district will have their own cost, depending on which program their students are in. We also looked at the transportation costs, and then the reimbursement dollars. You do receive the IDEA grant, the Individual Disabilities Education Act grant. And in years past, in previous years, co-ops would keep a real good portion of that grant. That changed a few years ago, and now the district enjoys all of that, which could be one of the reasons why there's less professional development offered by the co-op. It's quite probable. But in any rate, it's nice to have that money so that you can use it for how you see fit. And then my conversation with Dr. Lewis was really about the same, you know, just sharing the information that I learned from Dr. Olson and Mr. Rogers, and going over it, and talking specifically about a document that she had received about the hiring that they were having difficulty with, who that CEDOL was struggling with. And that's not uncommon today. It's not unique to CEDOL. Many co-ops are struggling with that, and nothing wrong, but a lot of times, teachers want to be part of a school district, and they can sort of pick and choose now, because we know that hiring is challenging today, and specifically, teacher assistants. You need, you know, a lot more in a CEDOL program, and their cost to hire an assistant is higher than the district, and probably because they have to entice them to come. So that is a challenge, and of course, it's passed off on the districts right now. In fact, in October, there were several positions still not filled yet by the co-op. So that's a struggle, and it's a challenge. So we discussed, like I said, the student placements, the progress, services, any potential changes. And Dr. Olson had been meeting with neighboring districts to discuss some of the issues. And actually, CEDOL encouraged districts to take a look at, are there students that you could bring back? And the neighboring districts got together, and they, you know, were really considering withdrawing, and were discussing together. So there is a document that was developed about, you know, the next four to five years on how might that look? Now, the difficulty with that is that we don't know right now how many students will be out there, not only with this district, but neighboring districts. So to plan for that is difficult, and those are challenges that co-ops have as well. So overall, the outcomes of this are positive in many ways, that because of the size of your district, District 76, it's such a wonderful place, small. How do you meet the needs, especially the various challenging needs of some of our students, where you'd have to create a program with maybe one or two students? So you do have the benefit of belonging to a cooperative that can offer that, as they're offering it for other districts as well. The district has had very productive and positive relationships with CEDOL over the years. So there wasn't a reason like, oh, we're butting heads, or, you know, we're not getting along, or, that's not it. It was really about, let's look and see, is this something we should be looking at from a fiscal responsibility? But also, like I said, more importantly, are our students' needs being met? So that opportunity still exists with the support of CEDOL. But there's potential cost savings for a district to service and program in-house for its students. I talked to you about the tuition costs, right? So you can just imagine that if you bring a couple of students back, that type of cost is saved, but you're going to incur other costs with that cost savings. So looking ahead, I think you should So looking ahead, I think you should explore on a small scale, continue to do this. Review and monitor the outcomes after one year. So let's take a look at, is SEDOL still struggling to hire next October? Are the, are the problems still there? Or has there been a change in that so that those challenges aren't there? Are all the services being met? We did find in one area that they were struggling to hire a particular therapist. So they had to go to outside, you know, outside of the co-op to a private program to have those needs met. So my final recommendations would be then to evaluate bringing students back who've demonstrated the ability to make progress and who might be ready for that less restrictive placement. Now, you do that anyway, every year. The districts will have their IEP meetings, you know, with the, they're part of that IEP meeting with the SEDOL staff. So that should be looked at every year anyway. But more specifically, I would really take a, a close look at some of those students and monitor closely throughout the year to see, maybe there's potential for this. And that is what I did do in the other districts. We started with that premise. Take a look at what students we can service and let's start bringing them back. Now, that doesn't happen overnight. That takes a few years for sure to do that. And once those students are identified, then you determine what are the staffing needs that we would have in District Seventy-Six to meet the needs of those students? How about space? That's a big deal, too, the space, to have maybe another self-contained classroom. Or maybe two. Professional development, what type of professional development would you need to prepare the staff to meet the needs of those students? And specific teachers that you'd be hiring or therapists? Related service providers, you'd be increasing their time. I spoke about that before, the occupational therapists, physical therapists. You start bringing students back, you're going to have to plan to meet the needs. Anything that's outlined in that IEP, you can't change it. The IEP drives the programming. The programs don't drive the IEPs. And then also look at the SEDOL staff that are currently serving District Seventy-Six, too. Would we need to increase some of that time or hire your own? So what are potential costs if you did have in-district placements? Most likely, additional special education, at least one teacher per program. Teacher assistance, additional time for those therapists, speech, social worker, occupational therapist, physical therapist, hearing itinerants, vision itinerants. That service isn't going to end. Those services are taking place in the, in the co-op now. But it depends on the IEP. And then what are those savings? Again, tuition and the related service costs, too, including the teacher assistance. We do know that SEDOL's hiring of teacher assistants is greater than the cost to hire one in District Seventy-Six. And I think it just goes back to some of the points I made about the desire to work in districts as opposed to co-ops. And, and that's not to knock a co-op. And very often therapists will enjoy a co-op. But, you know, you might go from district to district. And people like to be grounded. People like to have that sense of belonging with a school district. So that's, I think, where those challenges come in, at least in my experiences, they have been. So the next steps then would be to monitor SEDOL staffing to ensure that the services are met. To really, and that's going to be up to Dr. Olson and her team to make sure she's taking a good look at that and the communication with the district and SEDOL to be sure that all those services are met for the students. Continue the discussions with the neighboring districts regarding the programs and services. And perhaps a potential consortium of maybe four or five districts working together. But again, that could be very challenging, not knowing. And then one district is going to have to, you know, set costs for another district to tuition their students in. So it does get a bit challenging. But in the event that the challenges continue with SEDOL, that may be the answer down the road. And also review student progress to determine which students have the potential to return to the district. I, I mentioned that before, so that's a must, that really is next steps. And then, then let's look at our early learners. Because we never know what's coming up, right? So this blended, to have the blended model is key. We want to make sure that our students have opportunities for inclusiveness. And that should be happening at SEDOL programs. But moreover, the earlier we begin with that, that early childhood program, the more apt those students are to have that peer modeling and excel in their program. So that's really important to maintain and grow that early learner blended model. And I know you've done a great job with that already. And then continue with the SEDOL membership and partnership and have good communication with them. Honest discussions, sometimes, sometimes it's hard. It's hard discussions. And it's not about people in the position, not person, can't take it personal. We have to put students first. Is this the best programming for students? The other thing to look at is the private programs that are available within Lake County. Should we need to pull a student out of SEDOL that maybe we couldn't service at district, but place in a private placement? There's nothing wrong with that if it's appropriate. And also, if you can get the spot, because they're very challenging to get. So we have to continue to build relationships with those programs and learn about those programs. Very often, they want to hear from districts, what are your needs? Because then they can look ahead to see what they need to do. But that's real important as well. So if there are any questions, I will attempt to answer them. Or any other thoughts that you have on this, yes, please.
Thank you very much. I know that there's certainly benefits to having and bringing students from SEDOL back to, back to the classroom. I noticed up on the slides, you mentioned, you know, we could add a, a teacher and an assist, and an assistant. So those are two FTEs and, and portions of other, you know, speech and, and occupational therapists and that. So let's say, you know, two-point-five FTEs. How many students would we be able to serve for that? Is there some, because we're not talking about even the average SEDOL student. We're talking about sort of those that would be best suited to come back. Is there a general rule of thumb or best practice as to how many FTEs we need?
You know, that's, that's a good question. Again, you have ten students and they're all very different. You probably have a cluster of three or four, Kelly, if I'm not mistaken, that might be able to come to one program. And in special education, there's a four-year span you can't go outside of to service students. So you can't have a second grader in the same program as an eighth grader. Okay, so that's something to keep in mind. Those are the challenges that a small district has. That is why Dr. Olson was conferring with the other districts because maybe they had two that could come in to your two. But I really believe that looking at bringing them back to see how much can they participate in the general education curriculum with supports and services that we could provide as opposed to another room down the hall. Now, does that mean we wouldn't need another teacher? No, it doesn't mean that. But you would be analyzing their needs and what needs you might have. You might need another teacher, but you might need more teacher aides in a situation like that. Or you might need a halftime FTE. And then maybe you're looking at four students, you know, two in one cluster and two or three in another, and that teacher could be shared in that program. It's a good question. I hope I answered it and not confused you more.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's fine, thank you. And, and what's... What has prevented us from, from doing something like that already?
I, I wouldn't say it's prevented you. I think that those, like I said, the district would participate in the IEP meeting every year and determine if that placement, the district's the one that places the students in. Their SEDOL doesn't come and say, hey, we're taking this, okay, this student. So the district would continue to really look closely at what's happening in that SEDOL program. What type of progress has that student made? Are they ready to come back in a, in a less restrictive environment with, again, more supports and services brought to the student? So I wouldn't say that it hasn't happened. But my recommendation is take a closer look and really continue to monitor that. In the district that I was in last, we actually created, and it was a larger district, but we created two autism programs. One at the primary level and one at the intermediate level so that we had about four or five students in each program. But keep in mind, if you build it, they will come. I am, I'm not being joking when I'm saying that, but we had people calling, they would call my office and say, I heard you have this program. And we're thinking of moving into this suburb or this suburb, and this looks great. Because that's what parents want. They want their child to be in their homeschool at any time they possibly can. And that's what we should strive for, is that inclusiveness. And the state is really strong with that now, too. So they've kind of upped the ante on that. They watch and they want to make sure that districts are keeping kids in, in their homeschools as much as possible. But again, you're small, you have to make sure you can meet their needs. And right now, you have the opportunity to be part of that membership and enjoy those programs, but yet continue to keep looking. No problem. Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, well, thank you. I know it gets late and these meetings get long, so I appreciate your time tonight. And again, the opportunity to work as a consultant, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Powell.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying and being flexible, we appreciate it.
We appreciate that very much. Okay, that concludes our presentations for this evening. We will now move on to the business agenda. We have two items for action on the business agenda this evening. The first item for action is the omnibus vote agenda. Items on the omnibus voted agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff, administrator, or citizen, we should have a separate vote on any item or items. That item or items will be pulled from the omnibus voted agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda, items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Salwala, yes, Mrs. Bayless, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion is approved. And the next item for action is our personnel item this evening. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire, we have two leaves of absence, we have three resignations, and we have two internal transfers. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second. Mr. Pombalow?
Yes.
Mrs. Bayless, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
That motion is also approved. That wraps up our business agenda for this evening. Do we have any items for board discussion? Okay, and we did not have any freedom of information requests, notices and communications. We have some fantastic District Seventy-Six highlights. Congratulations on your baby, Mr. Freiberger. She's adorable. We love seeing those pictures.
It seems to be contagious in District Seventy-Six, doesn't it? You guys have seen a baby every, ever?
I know. It's in the water. I don't know, was there anything else you wanted to?
No, I just want to share with you, so Erica had the opportunity to attend the Illinois Principals Association Women in Leadership Conference last week. And Dr. Berger was able to be on a panel, represent District Seventy-Six. And I was able to facilitate that panel, so you can see that there's that picture. West Oak Intermediate School and staff and, excuse me, Mr. Prebble did an amazing job getting students ready for the IAR. As you can see, the flash mob video we've included for you, you can see Mr. Prebble's dance moves.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, I did. District Seventy-Six loves to read. We're going to be recognizing these two staff members at a future meeting. But Mrs. Tweed and Mrs. Pacararo, who are instructional coaches, put together an amazing event throughout the month of promoting reading with our staff and with our students. So those are just some highlights of that, of that video. And then Dr. Berger does a monthly event with her students who have earned the recognition to go on a field trip with her to do something positive for the community and sharing kindness. And as you can see on St. Patrick's Day, they visited Brookdale Assistant. And there's a short video that is quite the pulse at your heartstrings. So please take some time to just look at those little videos that we've shared with you and our District Seventy-Six highlights.
Great, thank you. And we now move on to public comments and positions on non-agenda items. This is not looking like we have anyone left to make public comments. And moving on to others, I added three items to others this evening. We had talked about, probably last year, the school board governance recognition application and talked about looking at, you know, if we wanted to add additional trainings or things that our board might do to kind of grow before applying for this, this particular year. So I think if we're all in agreement, we'd like to apply for that recognition and go forward and fill out that application. If anyone is interested in working on that, let me know, we can kind of collaborate. But I think it would be really nice to, to recognize our board for all the work that we've done. Then I wanted to remind everyone, the Statement of Economic Interest filings are back already. It feels like we just did them. But fill them out again, they're due in May. We all should have gotten an email about that maybe a week or two ago. And then the last item I have is trauma-informed practices training. So IASB, with their new board member training that's going to start for any board member elected in this upcoming April fourth election, is going to include trauma-informed practices training. And so when I saw that, I reached out to them to ask if, for existing board members, since, you know, if you are re-elected or if you've already done the training and you're into your term, you don't need to go through the training again if there was an opportunity for us to take that trauma-informed training. And they are putting together a class that's designed for existing board members. So that is something that, they said that they will have more information on after the April election. But I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because Illinois, the State Board of Education has that whole child task force where, that kind of was put together at the height of the pandemic and that really looked at the trauma-informed practices. And so the training is kind of coming as a result of that. And I think that that, you know, would be something important for all the board members to attend. So I will make sure that we can kind of get information on that. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention because the, the information that IASB sent out did not indicate that they would have this additional class. So I wanted to let you all know about it. Okay, that is all I have for others. Does anyone else have any others? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for the employment, employment compensation dismissal, or sorry, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
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 Ms. Baywood? Yes?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.